To the July sixth, Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Work Session. We'll call the meeting to order. And today we are privileged and looking forward to hearing from Willette Capers in a second kind of session now to advance our diversity equity inclusion work and I'm going to turn it over to Amber at this point. Amber, are you ready to go?
I'm gonna call the role first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yes.
Fine.
Go ahead and call her.
And Steve Banter.
Here.
Eric Mueller. Dave Rittma.
Here.
John Niama. Shirley Craddock.
Present.
Laurie Stegman.
There.
And Gravette indicated she couldn't attend Corky Collier. Corky come on, not yet. James Allison.
Excuse me, here.
Mary Helen Kincaid, I do not see. Kenny Stephenson.
Here.
Eric Mulunder indicated he was not able to attend Janelle Bell. Do not see Ed Washington.
Here.
Bob Salinger.
I'm here.
With eight board members present. And Corky did indicate he will drop in when he can.
Thank you, Wendy. I'm just gonna jump right in and turn it over to Amber for introducing Willette.
Amber.
Great. Wendy, would you like me to introduce Willette first and then we'll go into the breakout? Yes, okay, great. All right, um, so I am so privileged to introduce Willette Capers. I'm excited. Someday soon, we will call her Dr. Capers. She has dedicated her career to DEI issues and not only is she a public servant, but she's also a consultant and she does work with us and we're very excited. She is the Chief Diversity Officer and the Assistant Dean of Students for DEI at Augusta University. And she's working on her doctorate, which is really cool, at Northeastern University focusing on why Black women are leaving the field of student affairs. And that is a really fascinating topic. Today, she is going to cover a really important topic, which is unconscious bias. And um, I think it's important that we have a moment to reflect on that in a, in a private moment. And Ms. Wendy, if you could also bring Willette to that group, I would so greatly appreciate it, ma'am.
You should have an invitation to go to a breakout room now.
Willette, are you seeing that invitation? Yep, there she goes. Great, thank you, Emily. That's great.
And Brett, I kept, I don't know, I kept you behind. I wasn't sure where you wanted to land, so.
Good, that's perfect. I'm great here.
Um, so I'm assuming this training is gonna take the whole span and there will be multiple breakouts. May I be excused from this meeting? I don't know who, I mean.
Who, who you're at, who to ask?
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Interim Executive Director Keith, may I be excused from this meeting?
Keith is. Oh, he's already excused himself.
No, I'm still here. It just took me a minute. Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
That's okay.
Alrighty, I appreciate that, so I can go work on your bylaws, Wendy. Not that I can't without it, but it's just, I.
Anybody else wanna be excused?
Thank you. Bye, have fun.
Bye.
I'm just trying to clarify our staff, just.
Turn it over to the future Dr. Capers.
Thank you so much, Amber. Do we have everybody back? I know we were waiting to make sure we had everyone from the other room. I'm just making sure we got everybody back. Before I begin. Yes, okay, so can everybody hear me clearly? Yes?
Yes.
Yep, yep. Awesome, awesome.
We do have a couple strugglers that are stuck in the breakout room. I'm sure they'll be.
Couple are still stuck. It'll close automatically on them on 30 seconds, so we'll just hang out and be like besties for a little bit, okay?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was talking over in the room and didn't realize I wasn't out of the room, so.
That's okay, we're back now.
So, so I, it's, he was asking me, what's my day like? It's, it's, it's a computer day, but I have a gentleman sitting to my right who, without his help, I wouldn't be on this thing. He had to completely rebuild everything for me.
Well, we're glad you're here.
It's a pleasure.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I am so excited to have you all here with me. Today, I'm looking forward to our conversation and the wonderful things that we're gonna talk about today. One thing that I, some awesome news that I get the opportunity to share, since I last updated my bio with Amber and the team, I had the fortunate opportunity to get a promotion at my university and I am now the Assistant Vice Provost for Diversity Equity and Inclusion. So since I last saw you all, I, I've gotten a promotion and so I get to continue to do this amazing work, just get to build my own division at our institution. So just wanted to share that good news with you before we also talk about this amazing good information. As you all, those that were with me the last time, y'all know I love to start every session that I do with what I believe, so that you know where I'm coming from as we have these conversations. And so I'll go over them really quickly, but just want these to kinda be at the top of mind as we have these conversations. Again, don't forget, I have this huge computer screen. Remember, my, my desktop is a 32 inch, so if I'm looking over here, over here, that's because Emily is talking over here, Collins talking over there and I'm looking at Colin, but I promise you, I am paying attention. I'm just looking at this huge screen on, on my that we have here. So, just to kinda remember a little bit about what I believe, remember that I believe that people learn best when they believe that they have more to learn. We're ever-changing and ever-growing vessels and we are constantly taking in information every single day. Like, this information is not stagnant, it is ever-changing, ever-flowing. More is poured into it and I do this for a living and I don't know everything. Hence, you notice my books behind, behind me, I'm always in the library doing research. I'm listening to thought leaders. We learn best when we believe that we have more to learn. None of us know it all. And I'm gonna continue to learn and grow. I don't always get it right, but I acknowledge where I don't get it right and then I educate myself that I continue to learn and grow. Number two, I want you to know that an increasing awareness of oneself is a strategy for change. I don't wanna be the same person tomorrow that I am today and I don't wanna be the same person the day after that that I am tomorrow. I wanna continue to change and grow as I take in this information so that I can be a part of making sure that this world is a place where we can all show up and thrive as we truly and authentically are. Number three, I say this all the time, listening is a form of action. We listen to understand, not to respond. It's not a verbal combat, it's a verbal dialogue. And so it's about that back and forth of learning and growing from each other so that that learning and growing never stops. Talk about my strengths. If you've ever got the opportunity to do strengths quests or strengths finders, will you learn your top five strengths? My number one, positivity. And because of that, I believe that most people are well-intentioned. The founder of my high school, and I say this all the time, Charles Edward Murray High School, he used to say, Charles Edward Murray used to say, people do according to their own understanding. And then I add the Willette version of that of when you know better, you do better. And so I never go into any situation believing that somebody has had, like, they go into intentionally harm or intentionally hurt. Sometimes we just don't know the impact of our words or the impact of things that we do, but sometimes there's, that's where the education needs to happen. And so, again, I believe that most people are well-intentioned and always know that I come at things with a loving heart, with open eyes, as well as an open heart, so that we can all continue to grow and educate each other. I also believe that experience and discomfort is important to learning. There is growth in discomfort. One of the things that I tell people all the time, it's almost like when you're in church, if I step on your toe, if I say something that really impacts you, ask yourself, why has that impacted me? Where does that sit? Where does that live with me? And dig deep into that. Cause here's the thing, you can't lie to yourself at all. So it's okay to be honest with yourself and figure out, why do I have this comfort? Why is this impacting me? And what can I do to move forward? But on the flip side of that, hurting, shaming and blaming are never effective tools for change, cause in that moment, the learning and growing stops. And we never want that to happen. And then finally, I always want people to know that this is everybody's work. I cannot be doing it by myself. Amber cannot be doing it by themselves. Keith cannot be doing it by themselves. We do this work together. And I hope that you dig deep into these conversations that we have today. So, just to kinda let you know the flow of how we're going to go today, I definitely have this presentation. But I am going to expand the time and the opportunity to make sure that we're having those in-depth conversations when we go into the breakout room. So also know that I'll be popping around, just like I did the last time, to be a part of those conversations. If I pop into your room or I pop into your space, don't worry about me, you don't have to engage me. I want you to continue having those conversations. Sometimes the conversations are really good, is really hitting and I wanna join in and be a part of it and I do pop in and you know, you know, maybe ask some questions to get you thinking a little bit more, but you know, I really wanna make sure that we have the time and the space to have these deep dialogues. And I promise, I promise, I promise, you know, I can talk to anybody about politics and then peanut butter and jelly all day long for 40 to 50 hours. But I will make sure that we have enough time at the end where you all can ask me questions. You can engage, you can continue to gauge with each other. There might be some last-minute steps and conversations that people need to leave you with. I don't know, Wendy, Amber, or was it Colin, that might have some last-minute conversations for you. So I'll make sure to leave time at that. Does that sound like a good plan for today? Yes, yes, yes. Can I get at least one thumbs up? Oh, I love it. If you can, yes. So now here's the part that I really mess up every time, is I'm gonna share my screen. So the first thing I wanna do is share here. And the reason why this is always hard for me is because I don't use PowerPoint, I use Canva to do my presentations. And so that's where it gets a little, a little wonky. All right, let's see what's happening here. Share my screen. All right. Can you all see? USSWQD individual? Okay, now we're gonna do another test to make sure y'all can't see my presenter. Can you see my presenter?
No.
You can or you can't? Okay, perfect. All right, so usually when I do cultural competency as well, tapped into bias presentations, there's an amazing activity that I love to do called the Name and Point Activity. So I'm gonna look at the first person on my screen and that appears to be Ed. So Ed, we're gonna do a little activity. What I'm gonna do is, make sure you got, can you unmute your mic, Ed? Let's get a test test from Ed.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
All right, yes. So Ed, I'm just gonna hold up a couple of items and you're gonna proclaim, you're gonna boldly proclaim what that item is, okay? Meaning, you're gonna, you're gonna say what I hold up, all right? All right, you ready for the first one?
Yep. Oh, it's not gonna be on my big screen? Okay.
It's not on the big one. I'm pulling them up.
That looks like something you might have had with lunch today. I don't know, something that was holding a drink, a cup.
It is a cup.
Cup with a straw in it.
It's a cup, okay.
That's a book.
I am holding up a book. I am holding up a book. What am I holding up now?
Cell phone.
Absolutely. Next one. Okay, I'm gonna try to do this. We'll see, it's kinda big.
Backpack, I think.
Awesome, all right. So now Ed, I'm gonna hold up four additional items. You cannot, and I'm gonna go quickly, you cannot call these items what they are, you have to call them something else. Okay, are you ready?
Yes. Water glass.
Nope, that's too close to what this is.
Oh, okay. Flower pot.
All right.
A used book. I cannot say used.
It's too close.
Too close, okay.
We'll call it a banana. It's banana.
All right, I'll call it an orange.
Okay, what is this?
Piece of cake.
Piece of cake.
Suitcase.
All right, it's still a little close.
Okay. A sack.
All right, well, still close. We're gonna call it a car. Call it a car. So here's why I do that activity. And usually what I do when I do this activity, we're in a space, we're in a room and we probably go around the room and I have people point out objects that they see in the room and in the space. And then we go counterclockwise and they point at those same things and they have to call it something else. Here's why I do this. In the same time that it took Ed to really think about, well, what is this? It's not what I think it is and I can't call it what it is. Can you imagine that there are folks that navigate life and navigate our community having to process and seeing things as something else, but because the world sees and says it's something else, that now they have to almost kinda not conform, but navigate what it is in a different way. For instance, where I'm from, we call a bag or a purse a pocketbook. Here, they call it a bag. Other people call it a shopping bag or different things. And the reason why I'm talking about that is because that taps into your culture and what you're, what you learn. Our culture is a part of us. It is deeply rooted in the things that we do every single day. And so what we're gonna talk about today is how we can check our biases so that we don't, so that we can be aware of how people show up differently culturally because of region, because of race, because of belief systems, because of all of these things. And this is what we're gonna talk about today. So, we're gonna go in our first breakout group and here's the conversations that I want you to talk about. I want you, I want you to really be a little bit vulnerable with yourself and talk about what would you describe as your culture? You're gonna talk about what would you describe as your culture? How connected are you to your identified culture? And in what ways can other people see elements of your culture? Here's the thing, I'm not gonna define what your culture is. People love to ask me, well, what do you mean by your culture? You define what your culture is. So that's gonna be our opening conversation. I'll definitely give you all time to, to really, really dig deep onto that. But I want you to talk about, we're gonna open up the breakout rooms, what would you say or what would you describe as your culture? How connected are you to your identified culture? And in what ways can others see or experience elements of your culture? Again, remember, I'll be popping around. Let's go ahead and open up those breakout rooms.
Thanks, Emily. Amber, did you, are you okay to not be in a room?
Pop me in one, I'll just listen.
All right. And well, yeah, I don't know if you guys have access. Do you want me to just do it on the backend to send you into one now?
Oh, no, I'd go and join and jump in all of them, so you can kinda keep me where I am.
I can make you co-host and maybe that'll help.
Sorry, Mark.
All right, we got about.
Emily, we may need to close that other room, I'm not sure.
They're all, they'll close automatically.
Thank you.
All right, well, we should have everybody back now. I had some weird technical difficulties going on. It's, I was trying to pop in between rooms. For some reason, my whole Zoom just like froze and I couldn't do anything, couldn't move my mouse or anything. So Room One got a little bit more of my attention than some of the other rooms. I apologize for that one. But I did get to hear some amazing conversations for what I did get to be a part of. And there were, there were two central themes that I heard from, from a couple of people. But one of those main themes was in thinking about their identified culture and navigating multiple worlds and recognizing that we have multiple cultures. Here's the thing, and I love to share from my experiences, always know that I'm a sample size of one, meaning I'm talking about Willette, not every other person that looks like me or grew up like me. But you know, when, when I think about culture and I think about what culture means to me, I think of it in many different ways. Number one, I think of me as a Black woman growing up in the rural South and what life was like, what life was like for me. You know, I grew up in South Carolina. I talk about this all the time, right outside of Charleston. There are those written rules and those unwritten rules, unfortunately, culturally I had to learn. But then there was also somebody in that last group that I was a part of that talked about farming. And how many of you knew that I grew up on a dairy farm? And we sold our milk to the Colbert Milk Company. And then in the eighties, when a lot of the Black farmers started to lose their farms, we were one of those people. Oddly enough, right at that moment, that's when my mother graduated college, you know, she was a non-traditional college graduate and she went into psychology. And when we moved off of the farm, you know, we were more lucky than some of the other people that lost their, their farms. But then, guess what? There's another culture that I get to be a part of. I'm a proud HBCU graduate, meaning I went to a historically Black college or university. And so that is a culture in itself. But then I'm a, you know, I'm an eighties baby, so I grew up on hip-hop, so like Notorious B.I.G. and the Mary J. Blige. So, you know, culture is what we define and what we see within ourselves. So I see the Southern me, which is, you know, where I had to get out of using gendered language because my mom's backhand was coming. If I didn't say, yes ma'am, no sir, to everybody and, and knowing that now that you can't assume what somebody's gender is and so knowing that that, you know, played into some cultural things that made me who I am. And then outside of that, understanding that here I am on the executive leadership to a major university and I legit have a podcast where every one of my episodes is named after one of my favorite rap songs. And how many people can say they had the president of their university sitting on a podcast called Politics As Usual where Jay-Z was the author of that song. And so those are parts of my culture and how I navigate life. And these are the things that people see each and every day when they're with me. For, you know, like when I have folks over for dinner, like I believe here in the Midwest, they have potatoes for everything. There's some version of potato that's happening at the table, but me, I grew up on grains because of where I grew up. So I got some grits, we gonna have some rice, there's, I mean, all of these different things. And so these, this is where you can feel, you can smell, you can taste all of these elements of my culture and the things that make me uniquely me. Now hopefully you all have your, your your little note sheet in front of you, cause I'm getting ready to go into some things. I wanna give you the clinical definition for what, let's see, enter full screen, for what culture is. All right. Again, don't forget, this is the part that gets a little funky. And it looks like my Zoom is also being weird again. You all, I don't know what's happening. It will not let me share my screen. I have no controls. Here we go. Okay, this should work now. So let's talk about what culture is. Culture is learned. Culture is acquired at a very early age. We don't even pay attention to the things that we're learning. When you think about what your mom and your dad are doing, when you think about those family members, those people that, you know, maybe are a part of those houses of faith that you visited, it is shared. People as members of a community, you know, I add tribal here, cause as you know, I live in a very Native American heavy state. And so, and knowing that from tribe to tribe, to Lakota, Dakota and Dakota and how there's culture that, that, that is shared among those different tribes. We have nine major, major tribes here in the Sioux Falls region as well as around, among organizations. We pass culture around organizations. Perfect example, at my institution that I work at, anytime there is a new employee that starts, we always tell people the first three weeks should be getting to know folks. So everybody takes that person out to lunch or spends some ti, or takes them to coffee to spend some time with them. So that they can get to know them. And you just kinda work your way through the departments. And I just had a new staff member that started. And so she started in the summertime, so only really administrators are here, but faculty come back August 1st and now she'll start working her way through the faculty and getting to know them. And how can she partner with them at our institution? Culture is shared. Guess what? The good and the bad. And it's also multi-generational. Culture is passed on to future generations and it changes very slowly. The fact that I believe that I'm supposed to have some type of grain, you know, and when I eat, when I eat a meal, that goes back years upon years upon years and knowing of, specifically, I'm Gullah Geechee, I talk about this all the time. I'm the descendants of slaves from West Africa in the West Indies. And so they were specific, specifically brought, brought to like the Charleston Georgetown area where I grew up because their lands in Bein, like with my father's family, as well as in areas of the Bahamas and Trinidad and Tobago, where my mother's family both come from, a lot of those, they are just like where we grew up. And so they wanted them to come and cultivate greens and rice. And so because if they were growing it, it was free and easy to get to. That wasn't something that they had to go barter with, they didn't have to go and ask, you know, the, their owners, you know, for additional, they were already making these things. And so naturally, it became a tradition of, well, this is what we eat because this is what's here. And so I paid no attention to the fact that I believe that I'm supposed to have some type of grain when I eat a meal or some type of rice or, or grits in the morning, or I eat grits in the. When I eat a meal or some type of rice or, or grits in the morning, or I eat grits in the evening. Because it's multi-generational. Even some of the weird superstitions that I don't believe in, but I still do. Because I know that my ancestors are somewhere like, look at her. No, we taught her better. And so one of the things to know is that there is no specific definition for culture. No matter what they do, we try to, we try to tap it down, but culture is within us. And it is an array of things that we've learned, that we share and that we can continue to build on day in and day out. And the reason why it's important for us to understand and know about our culture and why our culture is important to us. Is to understand that if I have a culture, then I gotta know and believe somebody else got a culture. And their culture should be just as important to them as my culture is to me. And so I need to be culturally competent to understand that the same way as I know something as a packet book. Somebody might see it as a bag or they see it as something else. Or I call it a cup or somebody calls it a drinking glass. Or somebody might use the term, hey, can you press that button over there? Or hey, can you mash that? Cultural competence is having an awareness of your own cultural identity and views about difference. And the ability to learn and build upon the varying cultures and community norms. All of these people, everybody that shows up every day within our community, within our workplaces, within our neighborhoods. All are coming with these varying cultural differences. And we have to be open as humans, as citizens of the world. To the point that people feel comfortable sharing those elements of themselves so that now we can learn and grow from those cultural elements. Cultural competency, a set of congruent behaviors, attitudes, policies. Rules, both written and unwritten, that come together, both in a system, in an agency, among professionals, among community members. And enables that system so that we can all come together effectively in cross-cultural situations. Now, there are five essential elements that contribute to an organization or an agency in becoming more culturally competent. And these are the things that we're going to continue to dig into. Number one, value and diversity. And understanding that we all show up as different people representing different things. I was having a conversation with a student one day and I was just like, well, tell me a little bit about you, tell me about your culture. Because I was getting ready to go into a session where we looked at cultural identity. It's just that, you know, Willet, you know, I don't feel like I have culture. I'm just like a, a white midwestern girl. And I was like, why do you think you don't have culture? Like what leads you to believe that you don't have culture? I was like, what is a tradition or something that you and your family do every year? What's the food that, that you all love? And then she goes into ludifist. If you all have never heard of ludifist. Interesting meal, but very Scandinavian in nature, very Norwegian in nature. And you know, she started talking about how they do it. And about how every Christmas morning, they come together and they talk about, you know, different things. She talked about how everybody leaves their shoes by the door, no matter what time of the year when they come in. We all have culture. And it's about valuing that diversity that comes within that culture that makes us who we uniquely are. It's about having the capacity for cultural self-awareness. Thinking about how we show up in regards to culture. Couple of elements of cultural self-awareness that we think of. You can recognize how past historical actions. Are affecting current social and economic circumstances. You're aware of your own values, beliefs, stereotypes and biases. You can recognize how your cultural beliefs and biases may be affecting your decision-making behavior and perception of others. You can understand the varying cultural values of those that you work with and those that live in your community. And how do you imply and enact those things each and every day? And how you grow upon that and build upon that helps you as you become more culturally competent. It's about having a consensus of the dynamics inherent when cultures interact. And knowing that culturally, like I'm very bold, dynamic engagement. Like if there's conflict, you know, within my culture, like we go straight to the problem, we gonna have a conversation, we gonna fix it, we move on. But did you know culturally, other groups, that might not be their style of communication? And I have to take that into consideration because that might not be the best for that person. I use my hands when I talk. It's not that I'm being aggressive or that I'm angry. I just might be passionate about the, about the issue. It's about taking the time and developing a knowledge and understanding where things come from. How it impacts people day in and day out. And then it's about developing strategies to make sure that we are navigating. Across cultures, across conversations and across community in a way that people can be authentically themselves. And you can remain authentically who you are. Well, we create both safe and brave spaces where people can show up. Because it's easy to create a safe space, meaning, hey, this is a safe space, woo woo woo, I love you, you can show up as you are. But a brave space says, I have empowered you. To not just be safe, but let you know that you are safe in this brave space to continue to show up and to show out. And to be authentically you. No judgment. I'll never forget the first time my president heard me talking on the phone to some of my friends back home. And she actually heard my Gullah Gichi accent and she says, well, you don't talk like this at work. I said, no, I don't. I, you know, I definitely cold switch. I was taught how to cold switch and I do cold switch at work. And she says, you never have to cold switch around me. And to know this person who makes sure I get a check every month. This person who builds my budget, this person who has worked for. The, under the Clinton administration, who has worked under the Bush administration, who has worked. Under the Obama administration, who has served as not only our state senator, but who's. Five, no, three generations have been governors in the state of South Dakota. Have made me feel both, both safe and brave enough to show up as I am. To not make fun of how I pronounce a word a little bit differently. The euphemisms that I might use to explain something when, when we're having conversations. The A A V E that I might use, so you know, when I'm egging her on and letting her know that I'm feeling what she's saying. That's what cultural competence is about. And how does it show up? So you think about cultural competency in three different ways. We see it on the surface level, we see it at the shallow level, and then there's those deep cultural roots. So of course, surface level, we think about food, we think about dress, we think about music. We think about, you know, maybe the, the music that's happening, the, the, the dances, the latest TikTok trends that people are doing, whatever it is. That's what you can mostly, you see it on TV, you see it out, you're driving your car and you see it. But what about those unspoken rules where that emotional level is high? Like we're really connected to these things. And elements of courtesy. You know, I talked about how hard it is for me now to remember. I can't, I, I have to check the, the yes ma'am, no sir. Conversational patterns, the rules of personal space, the rules of conduct, facial expressions. Eye contact. Patterns of handling emotions. Notions of modesty, concepts of beauty, courtship practices. All of these things are tapped, are a part of those, of those cultural things that we build. Ideas on child raising. Theory of disease. I had a conversation with, you know, somebody just about within my community, within my community of the black community when COVID happened. And it was, well, I had to protect myself, but then when the vaccine came out, because of some history with vaccines. It was a little harder and it is still a little harder sometimes for health organizations to convince my community to get vaccinated. Because of that worry, because of culture and because of those, those, that information has been passed down generation to generation. But then you go even deeper. Whether you have those intense. Emotion levels. When we look at the tolerance of, of the concept of tolerance to physical pain. Where some of these elements of culture can be a hindrance and actually can be the death of us. The concept of self and how does self show up in the world? What does self represent? To be seen or to be heard or to be invisible. Attitude toward dependence, problem solving in roles in relation to age, sex, class, occupant, occupation. Kinship, gender, sexual identity, all of these things show up. Culturally deep within who we are. And it's important to understand, again, if this exists within you, it exists within others. Now let's talk about why it's important to understand why we need to be culturally competent, particularly here within the States. It's important for us to know that our society is continuing to grow and continuing to change. You know, and I know it's hard to see the numbers here, but I'm gonna read off these statistics for you. By 2050, the nation's racial and ethnic mix will look quite different than it does now. Non-Hispanic whites who make up sixty-seven percent of the population in two thousand and five will be forty-seven percent in twenty fifty. Hispanics will rise from fourteen percent of the population in two, two thousand and five to twenty-nine percent by twenty fifty. Blacks, which were thirteen percent of the population in two thousand and five, will be roughly about the same. Same population of proportion in twenty fifty, twenty fifty. The Asian community who are about, who are five percent of the population in two thousand and five. Have estimated it will be roughly at nine percent in twenty fifty. Looking at those who were born outside of the United States, looking at about nineteen percent in two thousand and five. To almost twenty percent by twenty fifty. So it's important to understand that our world is ever-growing, ever-changing. And it is that diversifying day in and day out. And if we're supposed to be this place where people can show up and be their true and their authentic self, that we're saying that we're the land of the free and the home of the brave. We want people to be brave in who they are and authentic in who they are. And we do this, not them. Can everybody still see my PowerPoint? Yes, I'm using you Wendy as a thumbs up. Can you still see my PowerPoint? Okay. Now. When we think about the culturally responsive institution, there are a couple of things. There's eight things that I want you to know. That as an organization that you need to be prepared of culturally in order to make sure that you're successful. Number one, organization, culture and commitment. So you need to look at written policies, how they exist, how are they associated with practices that are implemented? That support building and developing, developing a linguistically and culturally responsive team. And so in processes and procedures are reviewed. And that you actually take in feedback from those that you impact day in and day out. Why is this important? Because now it prevents, it prevents further situations that can happen, be it discrimination, harassment. But it also affirms that you care about how people show up each and every day when they come into contact with you and your organization. And how you all come into contact with each other every single day. So you have to define who is your organization, what is our culture and what is our commitment to that culture? And you gotta hold yourselves accountable for it. What are the accountability metrics that you have put into place? To say that we're going to be culturally responsive? Where is that leadership commitment? Are you gonna hold yourselves accountable? Are you gonna demonstrate a culture of care? Are you continue to educate those that you work with day in and day out? So that they also can understand how they can grow as individuals? In simplest terms, as leadership, are you gonna put your money where your mouth is? How are you developing staff? How are you training both staff and volunteers and those that come within, within your sphere of influence? So that they can continue to develop themselves? How does your organization define what diversity is? What about the impacts? What about the outcomes? What about the engagement? Who's our core audience and how do we impact them? What do we want them to see? Asking yourself currently, what do they see? What about our stakeholders? What about the communities that we've negatively impacted as well as positively impacted? What can we do different and what can we do better? What happens with that stake love, stakeholder level involvement? Are you engaging them in the process to make yourself a better person? How are you assessing what makes you your best self? What metrics have you put in the place? Where's those elements of that ongoing learning and that ongoing evaluation? Being culturally competent doesn't stop after my presentation ends. Because I can only give you a snapshot in two hours. So I know you all sat down and you created an equity, an equity document. But where does the assessment in that happen? What about your diversity scorecard? What about a full equity audit of your organization? And then what are you gonna do with that information? This is how we continue to be. Culturally responsive organizations as we interact day in and day out. Successful intercultural interactions. It taps into our attitude. What are the levels of respect and openness and curiosity and discovery, discovery? That we promote and encourage among folks. Thinking about the skill levels that we have that represent all of these many different cultures. And knowing that one person might see something different than somebody else because of those cultural experiences that they had. There was a study that I, I just read about that the, the author of the study had children to come together. And she showed them these pictures of, it was a picture of the Cookie Monster and then Elmo. So the Cookie Monster was standing at the door, but Elmo was in the bed eating cookies. And so the photo, she had these, these sets of children and she was like, who eats, who eats cookies? Who's eating, who is eating, who eats cookies? So from the photo, because oddly enough, Elmo was in the bed eating cookies, the children said, well, Elmo's eating the cookies. She added the A A V E verb of be, because be is a verb that is used a lot. Within African-American and black communities. And she changed it to who be eating the cookies? Even though the Cookie Monster had absolutely no cookies. Even though the cookie monster had absolutely no cookies in his hand, it was, he sure do be eating the cookies. And so those students understood it as something different. And so we have to know and understand within our attitudes, our skills and our knowledge. We have to be aware that what you might say might mean something completely different to somebody else. How many of you realize that they've begun to take the SAT out of college admissions? To get into grad school, they've begun to remove the GRE. The only one that's really holding strong is um the LSAT and the GMAT for um MBAs. MBAs for GMAT, LSAT for law school. Even to get into Harvard now, you do not have to take GRE. For a master's or doctoral program. Because they realized just how culturally across the board. People show up on those tests. That you can ask the question this way, but because of my culture and how I grew up or how I see things, I might respond different. Now granted, one plus one at the end of the day will always be two. But you can ask somebody a word question or a word association. And maybe because of how they grew up, maybe they grew up low income and they associated this with this. And somebody else associates this with this, they maybe grew up in a privileged neighborhood. And now they're gonna answer those questions two different ways. Let's do an activity. So I'm gonna, you're gonna go into your groups and I'm going to pop, you're gonna go into your groups first. And I'm gonna show each group a photo. And you're gonna look at this photo and talk about how this photo. Aligns with being culturally competent. You're gonna talk about how the photo aligns with being culturally competent. You'll take notes, you're gonna present out when we come back. Sounds good? All right, let's open up those, let's stop sharing. Hopefully it does not.
And you want the two rooms, right, Willa?
Yeah, the two was fine and then we'll keep um the other one. All right, I will get folks in and then. I will talk about our idols. So in the order that I'm gonna do the groups. I wanna do the group that Mark was in, I I think that's the. The M C, M C. M C D D group, then the next group I'm gonna do is the group that Nancy was in. And then I will do the group that that James was in. I don't know who I was, people's speakers are, but I did write down who uh at least the different groups. So wanna do Mark's group, the M C D D group, then we'll do Nancy's group, which they voluntold Nancy that she was the speaker. Uh and then we're gonna do uh the group that James was in. Sounds good, so I'm gonna share my screen again so I can show the photo. Um and then you can be, feel free to unmute yourself uh so that we can talk, so that you can talk.
Marker, I'm gonna call on you and Colin to summarize when we get to our group.
All right. So they had two photos, is this the first photo y'all want me to show? Or show them both? I don't know.
We we had uh, we had the onion.
Oh, you had, okay.
And the ice, and the iceberg.
All right, there they go, they had the onion and then the iceberg. Take it away.
Okay, I'll give my my rendition, uh the i- the iceberg was just, obviously. Well, not obviously, I guess that's why we're talking about it. Um just icebergs is are all famously, there's more under the surface than. On top and so. Um I did, I relayed some of my experiences about um my culture, cultural sort of. Um different experiences and things that built my culture and how that related to uh me not maybe presenting uh. Some of the things that the more complex facets in my life or the things wouldn't guess just based on outward appearances and. How that also relates to everyone else that you encounter. Um there's a lot more than meets the eye at first inspection. Um and then the onion. Um I talked about the layers of and the depths that di- different people have, you you really can't learn. Um fully learn about someone until you really peel back some of those layers and really get at. All the shared experiences that person has had. And Colin, I'll let you take it away with your plus ups on my analogies.
There we had uh some good discussion around that and yeah, the outside of the onion or the top of the iceberg is what you can. Perceive and see language, uh clothing, um the way that people outwardly present themselves, but as you. Peel away those layers, there's things that uh might not be as visible, um that just. Determine some of their behaviors in the way uh that they act in the world and slowly get away there. And and uh one other riff on that uh interpretation and analogy is also that. Um sometimes as you uh peel away the layers, it can really make uh others cry. Um similar for the iceberg that uh sometimes if you navigate too closely uh for what's visible. Uh you miss with under the surface that could end up sinking your ship, so uh variety of interpretations there. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss this.
Absolutely, even you know, even digging deeper and thinking about the onion, you know, I put up this onion. But there are many different types of onions that serve many different types of purposes. And certain, some thrive in some types of weather and some type of environments. While others thrive in different type of environments. It is the same thing when we think about culture. We all thrive and we all need different things to be successful in our life. And imagine when we think about how this onion is different than this onion. This onion brings out this when I use this type of soil. You even think about that when you think about the type of leaders people are. For instance, I am. I like a lot of autonomy. I mean, check in on me as a person, that's how I'm best at doing my job when you check in on me. But then there's some people that needs, you know, who wants a little bit more constant checking in, both on the project, on the person. On all of these different things and that's what helps them to thrive. I don't think you can, it's probably hard to grow a Vidalia onion out here in the Midwest. But do you know on the side of the road, asparagus grows on the side of the road here in South Dakota? And you'll just see people pulling over, picking up asparagus. I thought it was the weirdest thing until somebody. I, there was a a police scanner call and it was like, somebody's in somebody's yard picking up asparagus out of the ditch. But it thrives. We grow plums where I'm from, that won't thrive here. It needs a different type of soil and a different type of sun. And onions, just like culture, is the exact same way. Good job to that group. Next group, Nancy's group.
Okay, we had the goldfish and I want to say right off that it was very interesting because some of us. Pictured ourselves as the goldfish and some of us pictured ourselves as looking in on the goldfish. Um we, so uh these, this discussion actually ranged. Pretty wide about that, like we were talking about, well, the water's really clear, so you can see through. You can see um like see through to another culture. We also talked about how the goldfish is in a bowl and so the goldfish maybe only knows its own little world. And um and that sometimes we might feel like that, like I really can't tell what's outside of my culture. Um we also talked about uh how do you, like if you're someone not in that bowl, how do you relate to the goldfish? And um like you can interact with it, like and of course the goldfish have. In my experience, a goldfish has always been a pet. And so that brought up, well, if the goldfish is in another culture and we're trying to use that analogy. Um is it the right thing to interact with a goldfish? How do we, and it really uh. Lori said this really clearly, how do we main- maintain curiosity without being overbearing about another culture? Um I think that's a lot of what we talked about. I'd like to invite any of my team members to um. Add on to that if they like.
Anybody else from Nancy's team?
I think she did a great job explaining of whether you're looking out or looking in.
That's right, even in thinking about the environment, one thing I don't know if you all know about goldfish is they grow to the size of their habitat. So imagine if we put that goldfish in a bigger tank or expose that goldfish to a little bit more. And instead of a bigger tank, what if we put that goldfish out into um up in a a yard pond? Or even out into a a big backyard pond? How it continues to grow because it could expand with its elements? Culture is the exact same way. Exact same way, good job on that. And then finally, James's group. I don't know who the speaker there is.
I took just for the grouplet.
Okay.
Um so our photo was the glasses and some of the same themes were discussed. Um which is, you know, glasses symbolize seeing and our group talked about, you know. Being aware of the values that apply to to seeing and so there was discussion around everything from like. The styles of the the style of the glasses and you know, it that it represented, you know, like. A fifty style and and that that represents being very stylish and intellectual. Um smart, smart folks wear those types of glasses. Um and also, uh you know, the understanding of of history as it relates to the importance of seeing. Uh. Anyways, those are some of the themes that came up.
Absolutely. Glasses, you can see things differently. We all see things differently. We can be in one situation. And every last one of us will have picked up on different things that we notice. Glasses also are made specifically for us. My prescription is gonna be different than Amber's prescription. My prescription is different than Nancy's prescription. Nancy's prescription is gonna be different than Ed's prescription. It's for me. But it helps me to see. Sometimes I gotta take it off. When I need to see really close. And then I need to take, put them back on when I need to see even further.
Well, plus, you know, if you think about it, glad, there's like many other presuppositions around glasses. Like can you afford the glasses? Can you afford the prescription related to the glasses?
Do you have the insurance that that taps into that?
Oh my gosh, there's like.
You have access to transportation to even be able to get to the glasses place. Does your town even have one?
Right.
You know, a secret of mine with my glasses? My glasses are kinda like a mask for me. I use it sometimes to hide myself. I feel so exposed when I put my contacts in. I feel like people really see who I am and how I show up. Thinking about culture, me as a black woman, my imposter syndrome is showing up in that moment. Me thinking that I'm not enough, so my glasses have to hide the fact. I talk about this with my friends all the time. We let you wear your glasses a lot. Number one, when I don't have on any makeup, I just throw them glasses on so you can't really see that I don't have much, I don't have anything on. And then I can hide behind them. I can give this illusion. Culture is the exact same way. Thank you all so much. Thank you for participating in that activity. Now. What role does biases play in developing cultural competence? Cause I could talk about being culturally competent all day. For the most part, that is just general information that everybody should know in their everyday life. We should be more culturally competent, but where does it show up? It shows in our biases. We hear, we hear about biases all the time, but what is a bias? Okay. I'm about to give y'all the skinny on biases. Do you know, tru- I mean, they have found it, there's, they've categorized. At least, I think, like two hundred and fifty something different types of biases. But there are two main biases that we know, both the conscious and the unconscious. Or implicit and explicit. Today, we're gonna talk about unconscious bias, cause explicit bias, a conscious bias, like you know what that is. You know it exists. But that unconscious bias. The implicit bias. Is a thing that shows up that we don't even know showing up. What is bias? Biases of prejudice in favor of or against one thing, person or group. Compared with another, usually in a way that is considered to be unfair. Biases may be held by both an individual, a group, an institution or an organization, it can be both negative and positive. Bias is also known as social um cognition. Implicit biases refers to the attitudes or the stereotypes that affect our understanding, uh actions and decisions in unconscious matters. Why? Cause you don't even realize you're doing it. You have not the slightest idea that you're doing it. We all have biases. If you ever meet somebody and they'll tell you that they don't have biases. Baby, they are trying to sell ice to an Eskimo. We all have biases. They're pulling up, they 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 are really pulling the fast one on you. We all have them. Do you know that we take in um eleven million bits of information every second? Eleven million bits, think about it, sitting in my office right now, as y'all are sitting here watching me. You're, every second you're taking in eleven million bits. You might not be paying attention to things, but three months down the line, somebody could ask. Oh yeah, you remember Willa, when she was giving that presentation, remember she had the picture of the lady on the wall and she had like a block? And she had these books, I always remember this red book right here that's standing out and she had on like this like red paisley type dress. And like every two minutes she would move her hand like, you don't even realize you're paying attention to the different things that I'm doing. But consciously you're paying attention to it. So eleven million bits of information every second, but you're only consciously aware of forty. Not forty million, not forty thousand, you're only consciously aware of forty. So if you're taking in all of that information every second, it gotta live somewhere. And it shows up in our actions. All right, types of biases, we talked about the con- uh the conscious bias, also known as explicit. And then the unconscious bias known as implicit. Remember, conscious bias, also known as explicit, bias and attitudes. Um about a group that we're aware of, it can be uh invisible or visible um can be assessed. That unconscious bias, social stereotypes about certain groups and people, um that individuals form outside of their own conscious awareness. Beauty bias, confirmation bias. I was talking to my friend about um beauty bias one day, I mean, she just refused to believe that that it exists. I'm saying, I'm telling you like. There is a beauty bias. I was like, you and I could go up for. Because of what the standard and because of. These societal rules that we create, the sta- what the standard of beauty is. Because she is a fairer skinned woman and I'm a darker, fuller woman. And I was like, I could have more, a little bit more experience than you, but because you're gonna be viewed as the standard of beauty. You will probably get further ahead than I am. I said, I also, and then I had to tell her, I said, I want you to treat. How, watch how people treat you and I when we walk into a space or walk into a room. Even though I am considered, you know, the person of high of hierarchy at a higher level. You're naturally, they naturally come to you thinking that, well, this is the person that's in charge. And it's on, and then when you say, oh, no, what acts will let, oh, okay. These biases show up in all of these places. I want you to take a second. And think about where your biases show up. Particularly in regards to other cultures. It's gonna show up at how we look at cultural dress. In language. Communication style. Elements of beauty. All of these things, we don't realize. The standard of professionalism shows up in our bias. Implicit biases come from culture. I can think of them as some parts of the culture of our mind. Human beings have the ability to learn to associate two things together very quickly that is innate. What we teach ourselves and what we choose to associate is up to us. If I said peanut butter, what would you say? Nancy, what would you say?
Jelly.
Jelly. You ask my nephew, if I said peanut butter, he would say celery. Cause that's, that's him. In our minds, just naturally associate certain things. Because of how we are socialized. Um, his name is Habbro. Uh, I, I don't remember his first name, but there's this theory, so his name is Habbro. H A B B R O. Uh, and he created the theory of uh, socialization. And he looks at how we socialize as humans and we begin to develop our biases. Cause you gotta think, when we're born, we're just like born into this world of nothingness. Like, we hate nothing. Maybe the doctor that spanked us on the behind to make us cry when we came out. But like, I mean, we're, we, we just come in, you know, this form of emptiness. And then when we think about those first areas of socialization, who we socializing with? Mom, dad, auntie, grandma. You know, the, the people within your houses of faith, the people in your neighborhood. And these people start to, you know, interact in, almost imprint on us in the way that they talk. Um, in the way that they view life. Um, and those theories of sociali- socializations show up in how we begin to see the world and how we navigate the world. Perfect example. A mother can get in the elevator with her child um, every day. And, and I'm just gonna make this one up. If every day, um. A blue person shows up in the elevator. And every time that person shows up in the elevator with their mom and that child, and that mom, even if that mom says hello every day to that person, but she always puts her purse behind her back. Every day, now that kid is ten and mom still does that to that blue person that's coming in the elevator, hello, but mom still does it. Twenty years down, twenty years from now, when that child is getting in the elevator by themselves and the blue, uh, blue person gets in, and that child just instinctively puts their purse behind that bag. That's that system that that child has learned because of socialization. It gets reen- en- enforced. In the TV cho- the shows that we decide to watch, in the news that we decide to pay attention to. In the um, the houses of faith that we decide that we wanna be a part of, in the schools that we attend. The things that we read, the policies and procedures that we decide that need to be enforced. And then that cycle can continue if you don't get off it. That's where our biases come into play. I wanna do an activity with you really quickly and I don't have a lot of time, uh, but I'm gonna grab one person um, to be a part of this activity. Uh, and I, you know. The camera's on, James, I'm coming for you, my friend. You're gonna be a part of my activity. All right, James, I am going to show some words. And they are uh, a specific color. You're going to say, and you gotta move quickly, the color of the word that you see, okay? All right, you're gonna, you're gonna yell it out, okay?
This gonna be on your, your presentation or?
Okay, ready?
Okay, got it.
All right, I'll go slow to start with, okay? All right, you gotta keep up with me though.
I don't see anything yet.
Nothing there?
No, I s- I just still see the slide that says activity. Oh, and you know what? Uh, I would, I, you were in present, you were, I could see your notes in that last sharing. So I could see the slide ahead, which wouldn't be fair.
Let's try this again. All right.
Okay, I got it, red.
Okay, you ready?
Red. Blue. Orange. Purple. Orange. Blue. Green. Red. Green. Red, gr- blue, blue, blue. Orange. Red. Orange. Blue. I'm, you embarrassed me.
So what difficulties did you encounter doing that activity? Let's talk about that.
They just, you know, automatically, my reaction is to read the word and not see the color first. Go, go to what I read, the letters.
How does that happen in everyday life when we meet people sometimes? And anybody can answer that. Where do we see examples of that in our everyday life?
Is it, this is it, is it possible to see the color of the person instead of the word? Is that, is that possible?
Sometimes we just see what we see on the outside and not what people actually are. And now we could have made an entire decision on those things. That's where biases show up. It's in our perception, how we see people in uh, perceived reality. In our attitudes, how do we react towards certain people? Are you more jovial when certain people come in the room or less jovial when people come in the room? What about our behaviors? What about our attention that we pay to people? Do you know that a woman has to repeat her, uh, I'm sorry, that yes, that a woman has to repeat herself three? Um, three to five more times than a man, but a woman of color has to repeat herself six to eight more times for people to pay attention to her? That's where our biases show up.
Isn't there a really famous study that did this about um, where people run across the stage and what they see? And people will see somebody with a red shirt and somebody will say, nobody had a shirt on, somebody will say it was a man. Somebody will say it was a woman and it's just how your perception is of what happened. I mean. Read something about that, but i- i- it fits into you react to what you see. You know, you get scared because it's a man running across the stage with, you know, weird clothes on. As opposed to a man with a suit is one of the examples, but.
Yeah, I'm not very sure with that, but I do know that there's a favorite, uh, a famous study called um, Brown Eye, Blue Eye by Jane Elliott. An amazing educator. If you ever get a chance, you can go and watch her in that study um, on um, on YouTube. And you can look at both how our biases show up and how it impacts systems of power, privilege, and oppression as we navigate society. It's an amazing study. It's called Blue Eye, Brown Eye by Jane Elliott. But when we think about our biases, and I don't have a lot of time, and there's so much more that I wa- I wanna talk to y'all about. Um, maybe we can do a part two um, of this where we can go even deeper. Uh, and thinking about common biases that show up every single day from stereotyping to nonverbal biases, to affinity biases. First impression biases, halo horned effects, conformity biases, so many different things that impact us. Um, day in um, and day out. And it's important that we're checking those biases, cause those biases could be related to the culture that people show up in every single day. It can even tap into the microaggressions. That we say to people. That can negatively impact how they see each other. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna email uh, Breton Amber, um, a video that I, I want you to watch that really dives deep into what microaggressions are. And we don't even realize that we're saying microaggressions, um, or that we um, are displaying microaggressions. Now granted, I'm not a big fan of the term microaggressions. I, I like to call things what they are. Um, they are systems of bias traditionally that are rooted in uh, racist acts and uh, racist behaviors. Um, that we unconsciously and consciously learn day in and day out, that is intended to create hurt or harm. Perfect example of a microaggression that happened to me. So I'm one of the correspondents um, on D E and I issues for several of our TV stations here in our region. Um, and after I did an interview, um, the reporter said, you're so well spoken. And I had to stop her in the moment and I said, hey, do you say this to everybody? And she had to think about it. And I was like, at what point did you think that I would accept this interview and come on TV as a bumbling fool? Like, what about me and what I present that you needed to tell me that I'm well spoken? Like, you've read my resume, you read my performer, you've seen all of these things. What led you, what about me led you to need to tell me that I'm well spoken? Our university would have not added me to our call sheet if I was not gonna represent us well. That was a microaggression. Or another example, someone meets um, someone who might be of, of Asian descent. And they ask them where they're from. And I'm like, oh, well, I'm from Cleveland. No, where are you really from? And they're like, I'm from Cleveland, south side. Like, what do you want me to explain? And it's almost like alien and on land, like this is not your home. You know, I talk to people all the time why I, why I specifically will let against sample size of one, preferring to be addressed um, just as, as black. Because I, we don't address white people as white American, why is a whole other continent addressed to me? As a human, but again, sample size of me. Am I an alien and me- meaning alien and on land, meaning like, America is not my home. Because it is, even if I was naturalized, or even if I did move here, whether I'm from here, I didn't, but weren't, wasn't born here, it's still my home if I consider it my home. Or associating different races um, with different things. There was a situation this weekend when me and my friends went to the pool. And immediately, the people in the chairs beside us began to pick up their things, making to make sure that things weren't stolen. Granted, they didn't say anything to us and they nicely smiled at us, but the moment we went over there, they got out of the pool, came, checked their things. And it just really ruined our si- our, our time at the pool. And I finally had to say to the person that lived there, I know, hey, like, we don't steal. Like, we're educated. This lady over here has a PhD. This person is our university's volleyball coach. This person is, is the baseball coach. But their biases automatically assume that, oh, they're here, they might, them mu- must be taking my things. So again, I don't have enough time. Again, I told y'all, I will talk all day long to go over all of these things. And I really wanted to go deep into cultural competency and understand and talk about elements of cultural sensitivity. What I can do is record a video to explain some of these things a little bit deeper and look at about understanding um, the development model of um, intercultural sensitivity and I can share it. Uh, but I could talk to Amber um, and Brett about that a little bit later. Uh, but I did want to open up at least uh, to answer some questions um, and to talk a little bit further and to allow space. Um, if there was some other information that needed to be shared.
I have just one question, and that's the use of we and they. I try very hard not to do that. Because then it puts me in a class that whoever I'm speaking to and how you would address that. Or if that's like overreacting on my part.
So what do you, explain a little bit more what you mean by we or they? Give me an example.
When people will say, um, they aren't, um, they aren't, um, we want this to be done. Who, I always say, who's we and who's in your pocket? Or they need to do more about this in the terms of, you know, if we're addressing an issue, who they is?
I get into, I, I become a little specific with it. Like, if it's an issue that needs to be addressed. This organization needs to address X, Y, and Z. Now, if it's, now it needs to be rooted in, in factual information and rooted into observable things. Um, it shouldn't just be generalized, like for instance. If there was a situation dealing with. Something happening on my campus and I noticed that groundskeeping wasn't picking something up. I would be specific and say, I need to reach out to facilities. Groundskeeping needs to do a better job of picking up X, Y, and Z, because that is impacted and that's who's in charge of it. Because here's how it can impact the institution. I try to be, I try to narrow it down, but be as specific as possible. But don't group all in process. Like, if I know one person, if Carl was in charge of that, hey, Carl, I know traditionally, this is what you do. I, I don't know, Carl may have had an emergency across campus and he ain't get a chance to do it. So first I do some investigation and then I dig a little deeper and have some of those conversations, so as not to lump people together. But speaking in terms of culture, I cannot say that this group of pe- people culturally need to do something. Because again, sample size of one or sample size of ten out of ten million. And so instead of saying all or saying these people, I say, I get specific um, into that. And I try not to assume that all people have anything to do with the situation. Yes, that was, next question, Steve.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I think, I know we're scheduled to go to three o'clock and I know folk, we're gonna lose some folks that have uh, to run to other meetings. I just wanted to say before that happened, uh, just from my perspective, thank you so much from, for being here and going through these exercises with us as a board. Um, I know we have more work to do, but uh, I feel like uh, again, it's a process, it's not a destination. And we're taking steps to further our understanding in this area. But thank you so much, Willa.
Thank you so much.
Um, it's three o'clock now. I'm gonna call the time and um. Look around the room here. Does anyone have a final question or are we ready to adjourn?
Just a huge thank you for coming and spending this time with us.
Again, always remember, the learning does not stop at this conversation that we're having now. I'm just introducing you to topics. The real learning begins with the conversations that you all have with each other. The continuing, you know, learning, reading articles, pulling books, and these conversations should continue as you all continue to meet and engage with each other. That's what a real learning and growing happens.
Excellent. Thank you, Willa. Um, I guess we're officially going to close um, the meeting and um, stop the recording. And thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time.